My name is Mandy Courtwright. I'm a junior and this is my second year as a student ambassador. My student ambassador experience has been fun because every single event that I've worked, I've never not had the time of my life. And while student ambassadors is about leadership, it also teaches me how fun leadership is. My favorite event that I've worked as a student ambassador was the Young Leaders Conference. I attended it since I was in probably fifth grade and it always made me want to be a student ambassador. So to finally get to work that and come up with fun ideas to get the next generation into leadership was just, it was so fun. When I worked the October Board meeting, I was nervous before. I was standing before all of the principals in the district and you know, other important figures, but then I got up there and I said what I needed to say and I wasn't nervous at all because I knew that I'd been prepared. This is a once in a lifetime opportunity, but you shouldn't be intimidated by that because once you get in, you're never unprepared. You never go into an event not knowing what you're doing. You're always taught exactly what you need to do and I just think it's the perfect opportunity to further your leadership skills. We, you know, Leadership London is a perfect example of that because we showed around business leaders in the community. We showed them our school. We showed them what's going on, what we find interesting as someone who comes here every single day. But I had so much fun on that tour. It was just, it was genuinely an honor to be able to show them around our school because I'm so happy that I signed up to do that.
Yes.
Hang on. We're not, we're not, we're not, conversation will go on. Okay, it is noon. I'm gonna officially call this meeting of the Mary County Board of Education to order. And first up is to consider approval of BG1, BG2 draft contract and project scope, et cetera, et cetera. And so I guess I'm gonna need a motion on all of those in a second to allow us for time for discussion. So I'll make a motion on item number two to consider approval of BG1, BG2 draft contract and project scope documents for the guaranteed energy savings project at Glasscock and West Marion. One, one second. On this, because there are so many specific options, if we make this motion, then we have to define and say which items we are approving. And so given that we haven't discussed these, I don't know that that's possible at the moment. Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
If in the course of discussion, during the course of discussion, because we have combined the two projects for the total, for the budget, because we, we can, we can define what those are, which ones that the board would choose to approve would dictate how BG1 is finalized and BG2 is finalized, as well as the contract, and which project scope documents we would have. So it's possible that that's how we would have to do it. And let me stop right there and say, Mr. Spalding, that is correct. And I just said, alright, okay. So that, that's our understanding of how that could work. If there is a different way that you can choose to do it, then that should be a problem out. We just have to get it sorted.
I'm gonna make a motion to amend the agenda to include discussion of those items for item two and then shift everything down one.
I'll say.
All in favor? Okay, so now let's go through all of these different pieces apart. That's what, well, you're right, you're right. Actually, no, it's not an approval, it's just discussion, so I think we're good. Thanks, Shelley. Okay.
What I will do then in that case, because now we're getting into technical thing, I'm gonna defer to the CNPA representative, Adam Pearce.
Hi. I'm Adam Pearce with CNPA. So basically what we have, we, back in September, the board approved going down the guaranteed energy savings contract path to upgrade the HVAC at Glasscock and West Marion. And talking to the administration about some, some options, questions that we had on what was to be included or not, things that were brought up sort of like the, when we originally talked about it, like for instance at Glasscock, Mr. Spalding says, let's look at replacing the heat pumps at Glasscock and use the ESSER funding to do that. So then we were looking at the plans and we said, well, okay, what about the rooftop units that bring in the fresh air and the exhaust air for the building? What about those? Cause they're about the same age as the heat pumps. And then the gym air conditioning at Glasscock was brought up as something that they wanted to look at and evaluate. And then also I asked about the classroom buildings, the classroom building behind Glasscock because that, the age of that equipment was about the same as the equipment in the building. So there were, there were a few options that we considered in the design and got pricing for from contractors. And that's why there's the three or four options that you may be considering here. So I think the, the base bid worked for West Marion plus Glasscock, because the base project was around 3.3 million. And then you add on top of that, if the, the three options that you're showing are one that's just including the classroom building, I think that's the lowest price alternate is to add the classroom building.
Can you hold for just one? Please add him, I'm sorry. The way you just described, the 3.3 million is the A is C option. Add it again. That's the two bases. Sorry. I just wanted to point that out on the spreadsheet they're looking at.
Okay, yeah. And then the next option, I believe, included also on top of that scope I just described, added gymnasium HVAC. So that's the, the most expensive option. And then the next option, basically subtracted the classroom building. So there are those are the three. One is classroom building only, one is classroom plus gym AC, and then the next one is gym AC only.
Okay. Um, I'll be honest, Adam, we're looking at a whole, whole lot of paperwork up here. So can we possibly go through kind of a cost benefit analysis of each? So you know, since we've started the conversation about Glasscock, let's just start there. Then I know that some of us have some questions about the outside air units and you know, and so I think we've got some things to consider on that, but what do we get if we go with the outside air unit installation? What do we lose if we don't? And then Shelley, I'll have some questions for you too on that one. So I, I think, like I said, we're just looking at a lot of information to be helpful to break it down piece by piece.
Yeah, so the, the outside air units, that building was renovated in the late 90s. The, the older part of the building was renovated in the late 90s. So there's a couple of units on the center corridor roof that were part of that project. And then in 2002 or 2003, the building was added on to. So some of the equipment in the building is not as old as, the addition parts are probably about five years newer than the rest of the building. But that outside air alternate, we knew it was gonna be expensive because that's just expensive equipment. I guess the, the, the question is, how much funding do you have available? Is, is it a, you know, you have the flexibility to go above the three and a half million or whatever, if that's your, if that's your budget? That equipment currently is functional. I think the district invested. I think there were some problems with that equipment and the service contractor was brought in to get that equipment back up and running. But I think it really, whether you do it or not, at this time, really it would come down to funding availability. I think the need to do it is still gonna be there. It might, you might get another 10 years out of that equipment, but I would say in the next, over the course of the next 10 years, it's either gonna need to be replaced or it's gonna need some repair work here and there as things come up.
So we can anticipate paying this amount, probably not this $726,000 within 10 years?
Yeah, I would think if you're, if you're gonna revise your facility plan here in the future, the HVAC heat pump could come out of the description of what's needed in those buildings, but the outside air replacement would need to be on your facility plan as that gets updated in the future if it's not done yet.
So basically it's an investment that will need to be made. It's just whether we do it now or 10 years or five years. Okay. Okay. And then the air conditioning at the gym, I mean, I think that's probably pretty well understood by everybody.
There is existing AC there. This is just a.
In the gymnasium?
No, there's not AC there.
No.
It's all, it's still.
Okay, so this is all new? Just for question purposes, you have the two new schools.
The elementary school has it.
Yeah, okay. The two new elementary schools.
We'll have air conditioning in the gym. And then West Marion, because of the layout of their gym should, yeah, okay. So Glasscock is the only elementary school that will not have air conditioning in the gym if we don't do this. And then the alternate building, that's the HUCI Spalding Academy. I think we had some questions on what, how this building is currently being utilized and our anticipation of how it will be utilized in the future. Cause I think it's, the students have currently moved up to the area technology center? No? So they're still in that building? Okay.
There's always been something in that building, no matter what program.
And so this would be an upgrade to the HVAC in that building?
Those units are pretty much part of Glasscock's school facility and all that's been originally at the same late 90s and all that. Glasscock got air conditioning in 1998, that was part of that project. And so those units are the same age as the rest of the original part of Glasscock. The good news is, there's a couple of things we need to talk about real quick. One is that alternate for third inclusion controls on that, currently does not, so in rural areas, it's such a small building. And we're hoping about $15,000 to $20,000 savings. We won't know that until we get the end of bid this accordingly. This is kind of a ceiling bid, okay? And then the other thing is, why we're having this meeting is if, on the equipment side, if we didn't get KDE, if they approved this in time, we get the purchase orders again by January 7th, there's about $100,000 in savings on, on equipment marked up on it. There's a pricing there is happening at first year. So we're trying to get this into them to get approval. Once we have that approval, we'll, same way, we'll issue the direct purchase order again and save that, not only sales ties, but also save that injury. So there's potentially up to $120,000 in savings pending some timing issues. Of course holidays coming up, stuff's gonna be a little more difficult to get that done as we said, but we're ready to submit. It can be approved once you all sign off on all documentation.
Okay. Other questions about the Glasscock alternates and options?
Let me see if I can, this is just a base. It could be less than this, is what you're saying?
It could be less than this, this month. Part of, I do think we'll have $15,000 to $20,000. If alter, uh, third, the alternate school building was chosen, that will reduce probably $15,000. And oh, we could potentially save another $100,000 on the base portion of these two. If KDE approves and this advice does, we can issue the purchase order pertaining to equipment, probably January 7th.
Other questions? Okay, going to the West Marion option. So we've got a base bid and then the only alternate for that is geothermal. And we've had the conversation about geothermal. We discussed the high school project, but I had some questions on geothermal at West Marion. You know, this is ESSER's funding, whereas the high school is bonding. And so the high school part of that evaluation was, we're gonna have to pay this back. It's gonna take us 20 years to pay it back. And so 20 years for the district to start realizing the, the return on that investment. But because these are federal funds and there is no payback for these for the district, then the return on investment is immediate when it comes to like energy savings and things like that. So in my mind, it's a little bit of a different conversation than what we had at the high school. And so, you know, with, with that in mind, what are the benefits and what are the pros and cons associated with geothermal at our elementary school?
Yeah, so the, the pros would be just some more, not as much utility costs and then maintenance costs over the life of the system. It's, that building is already fairly efficient. It's not like we're going into an inefficient building and then using all those savings. That savings can fund that work. So the building is already running pretty efficiently. And to go from what you have now to geothermal, the base bid scenario versus the geothermal option is about a $10,000 a year cost reduction in terms of electric cost and also maintenance like water treatment on cooling tower and then just maintenance on boiler. So that's the, that alternate was, was what, like 442,000? So the, the $10,000, the district would keep $10,000 a year basically by making the switch from the boiler tower setup that they have in the base bid versus the geothermal. The geothermal pricing right now, I went back and looked at London Middle School and the, the way that we evaluate that, it's Knight Academy now, but back then it was London Middle School. The cost per well, per foot. So back then it was $10 per bore foot of wells. We drilled 400 feet down, times 72, and that math worked out to $10 a foot. Right now, this one came in at $24 a foot. And part of that is the, the contractors are all just so busy right now that the, they know there's lots of work going around and it's a supply and demand type of thing. And I think that's the reason why the pricing was just so much higher than what we would have expected pre-COVID.
So with that, with that said, could we see any issues of this delaying the project because of getting that done and not being able to get this done on time?
The contractor that was below bidder here, they do have some other work coming up this summer, but we're pretty familiar with their workload because they're bidding some other projects that we've, that we've designed, one of them being in Carroll County. But if this work could, if they could get started in March or April, I think they could be done in time this spring to then move on to the next project that they've got that was slated to be summer work for them.
Come in, go ahead.
I was just wanna ask Shelley if she could remind us about what we had set aside for each project.
Well, currently right now, we only set aside money out of our ARP ESSER's funding. And that was, we actually put 4 million in there because the caveat in ESSER3 is also that 80-20, where you, 20% has to be spent on learning loss. So that for us, we got a total of the 7 million. So we currently have budgeted about 1.8 in the learning loss part. So the other parts past 4 million are like tech, because we know that we, you know, pulling off some of that, when we have to redo Chromebooks and, you know, cause there's only a certain shelf price. So we had put in ESSER's, ARP ESSER's, 4 million.
Okay.
Coming back to the geothermal, what is the lifespan on that? And can you build, I'm just gonna use, can you build on this area too later on or?
We would wanna put it in a, on a portion of the site where you weren't planning on building anything because you don't wanna have to dig down and putting in like a footer for a building, because the, the pipe itself will be about four feet deep, which may or may not be down below your footer. And also if you had a problem and like say you had a leak or something like that, you wouldn't want that being underneath the building.
So this would be somewhere back on the property, right? They're close to the buildings.
Right. We, I think we showed it on the western border of the property.
If you're looking at West Marion from the road, it would be up to about 10 o'clock. You're far left, behind the kitchen, you'd have to carry them off. Or we did about, people would go if geothermal was selected.
How big an area would that take up, guessing?
We have a drawing. It's a, so there's 45 wells. So I think we've got three, is it three rows? So it's 40 feet and they're on 20 foot center. So the first row and then another 20 feet is the second row and another 20 feet is the third row. So 40 feet by 200, is it 15 long? So it'd be 280 feet by 40 feet.
So you're thinking this would be a whole lot cheaper for us in the long run?
For say 21, 22, it would be about $10,000 savings to the district and operational costs.
And then replacement of cooling towers and boilers that would inevitably come at some point is about how much now?
Boilers and towers is probably a $200,000 expense.
And that happens once every like 15 to 20 years, is that right?
Yeah, so the tower, the tower is not that old because it was replaced in an insurance claim a few years ago. The boiler, yeah, I'd say 25 years, 20, 20 to 30 years depending on how old you are and the maintenance.
Theoretically speaking, you said the boiler, so the boiler was up there y'all?
The tower, cooling towers.
Cooling towers, is that something that we save and we use for whatever? Or is it, that gets elevated once it's put in?
Well, hey, we've had this conversation.
It's, you could probably find a, a surplus company to buy it from you and put it in their rental fleet, but you're not gonna get that much money out of it. And you don't, you've got geothermal everywhere other than the high school and its project. You've already got that bogged basically, the latest project.
Correct. So in the high school project, we are, are replacing the cooling tower. Oh, and it will be made undersized just because it's working for the gym.
Right.
For the size of the building, so.
I think there was a question I could get to about the life expectancy of the geothermal lived without living the building. It's a, the pipe is warranted for 50 years. It'll be there way longer than we'll be here.
Something else about repurposing, the boiler at West Marion is electric, all the other boiler have the dishwasher or natural gas. So that wouldn't, we couldn't reuse that anymore.
Shelley, are there things that would need to be cut from your plan, your ESSER spending plan?
Yeah, I was just trying, what the, the, another majority piece on that, the ESSER3 is the technology.
Right.
Plus you have the vaccine incentive which will be paid out of that, but that's about 50,000. There's about 600,000 in there for the Chromebook or the technology repair as things, because that's a, a major expense. Little bit is from salary for the budget coordinator. There is, and Squawk and Brothers being to this more, there is indirect cost that you can take out of ARP ESSER's that is, I don't know what percent, like a.
It depends, it varies from year to year based on the percentage of KD that's in our place off of indirect costs.
So there is a sum of money in the indirect cost that I, it's just budgeted as indirect cost. So that's where that was. I can only get that.
Another thing is, so including what we have to stick into KDE or whatever we decide to do, is we have to show that, Shelley has an upload all this stuff to our form finding GMAF. And included in this submission, we have to show in GMAF our work and that this is, this money is set aside, this $4 million is set aside. So if we do anything, it's not worth the work. And she'd have to allege to me in the GMAF midway, let it come out before we can submit this, KDE, which is potentially, not guaranteed, we're gonna get $100,000 in savings, but it will definitely delay, probably reduce our revenue for that, for sure.
So it would delay us to the point that we could not do, save the 100,000?
Correct, that, that, that would definitely.
That's a good one.
But it's a shame, we're saying, if we go for $4 million.
We don't call it.
Yeah, she has $4 million to set aside in, already in GMA that we're going to show in the budget, that she's already submitted prior to. So we need adjustments to go over that, that would delay this project. When we came with that number 4 million, we initially budgeted around 3.5 million for this project. We handled, we put the other $500,000 into our other air quality and other facilities, not, not, just not knowing what code is going to bring. This money is, uh, due to 2024. So we wanted to make sure that we have a little bit there for the unknown or whatnot too. So if we go over 35, we're okay, but if we go over the 4 million, it kind of reduces opportunities for other stuff in the future that, if something else that's going to.
There was a possibility we would be using our funds in order to ensure this, or?
That would be really the choice of this board. The difference money is there. Mrs. Badgett can make adjustments to the budget. There's, there's a cost to that, she just explained. But it would be really the preference of the board as to what it thinks is best and what is most cost efficient. As Mr. Truitt mentioned a few minutes ago. That's based on that and the 3.5 million dollar budget, I'll call it a budget, there goes. Mr. Spalding mentioned a few moments ago, was basically, that's what guided my communication to you folks about assuming that we were trying to stay close to it. Of course, if you're not, that's why the rest of these figures are there in front of you, but you can look at those options and decide which way you want to go.
My preference is that she has 4,000 set aside and definitely needs to do what we need to do in our budget or whatever. But we don't miss out on the savings of the $100,000. And I think current mending our budget is going to cause that. I'm not willing to negotiate here, but I don't want us to lose $100,000.
Go ahead, um, that, the savings that come off the top of it, you know, so these numbers include kind of the ceiling, right? And that savings could come off of them.
Not get any production.
Any, and.
Also the point.
And so if we were to look at doing, and this is just a question, doing geothermal at, so basically West Marion with GEO, Glasscock with the gym and QC Spalding, our savings would cover the overage potentially of 4 million.
West Marion base plus the geothermal would be either B and then, um, if you wasn't doing the
It'd be plus H.
Building, that would be, I'm sorry, B plus H?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Yeah, is it 4.1?
Yeah.
At that point.
I mean, it'd be kind of close.
So, uh, I guess I, I had to explain KEE while we were over 4 million initially. I've loaded that paperwork.
Is it a situation where we can rock here to pay Paul? And if it was the 4 million and we pulled $100,000 from somewhere else to cover that?
So here, here's what happens. Right now, this, this paperwork is processed expedite if it's one funding source. So if we list two or more funding sources on this paperwork, uh, so on the BG1, you gotta identify the cost, you gotta identify the revenue that you're coming from to cover the cost. So if we put the 4 million, it's about ESRS3, ARP, and if we're having $100,000 somewhere else, that's going to delay because I guess our 4 million is in pockets. So it, it, you risk losing it out of that option.
That could be my question, dude. Sounds like any budget amendment to what was originally laid down is going to result, or is that not true?
It's probably delayed, it's just extending the process of approval.
And it's, and it's still, I'm not saying it still might, it still may be a good.
It's an option, correct. You should risk losing it out of that option.
I was just saying, that may be an option as long as, whatever, however, we, we didn't fund. If we end up having to do a budget amendment, either an ESRS amendment or amendment to BG1.
So let's say we go through all this and we just use what we're saying here. And we find out that we need more money or something, would we just go slap on the risk?
Uh, no, we would do a revised, we would do, we would come back and do this, but we would revise to, to capture the need, cause additional costs. So we would submit, I mean, it, it's all very transparent. As long as you can pay for it, they don't care, you know? But you just got to resubmit the true cost and then for the, well, it's funny, coming forward to cover those additional costs.
But we could get started, everything go into motion as it is?
It depends on what, what funding source you want to do, so.
See, it's clean, it's probably just using ESRS. But is it, is that going to achieve what it is that we want to achieve?
So you would go on myself, if you did this about 20 year payback, if you centered, you could spend $200,000. If you had to replace a boiler, the cooling tower one time, that's 200,000. And then it's $10,000 a year in utility savings, so it's additional 200,000. So this is going to take about 21, 21 years or so in those terms to pay for the geothermal course.
If we were paying for this ourselves and having to pay it back, I think that, that's the thing.
Paying for it, because it's going to, it's going to prevent us from something else, for sure.
It's, it's.
And the building's already 30 years old, so I was thinking more 20 years, I was at point.
So one, one thing that we could do, and I'll give Chris the credit, he just texted me. We could move forward and with the paperwork showing that we're not doing the geothermal and then do a change order after the topmost fall in place. We've done that before on other projects, um, where Warren County is an example that comes to mind though. But we've had a contractor do this scale and then they, and then they're like, well, we want you to do this too. And then it's just a change order to that contract. Um, as long as they have the funding availability, that we're, since they have the funding to do it, we're able to do it out there. And that kind of kicks the can down the road a little bit and maybe helps to get captured and savings by allowing us to move a bit.
But then also include us using a different funding sources, what you're saying? And if we went that way and kicked it down a little bit, or do we still have to go back and dispatch it and ask her to?
Well, I guess it all depends on, one, one big thing is, is if we get the savings of a $100,000 of issue of POs approved by, to, uh, issue of PO before January 7th, then that's going to leave us about $500,000 in there already for GMA funding of $4 million. At that point, we could do the change order and take the offering 440,000 within her already allocated budget. So right now, if we did, if you did the base at West Marion, we got GEO, the base at Glasscock, including the air conditioner, the gym and the annex building, year 3, 3, 6. If we don't do the controls on the, on the, uh, annex building and then we do get the $100,000 in credit from term by issue of PO by January 7th, then you're down about 3 vibes and change. So at that point, you would have almost a half million dollars in her already approved state budget. Within that $4 million to come back and say, let's add on the geothermal. But we won't know that until we get through KEE to issue the purchase orders to see if we can get this $100,000 savings return by January 7th.
To give you a little more of the story on the $100,000 that you're referencing is, we got pricing from Train for the equipment and the controls. And they said, if you can't get us a PO by January the 7th, add 10%. So the 10% penalty is in these scenarios that you're looking at because we didn't want it to be, we want it to be a good surprise instead of a bad surprise, like, um, if it works out in your favor. But, um, the, so what we've learned in talking with Train since we last met with, uh, Mr. Randolph and Scott was that, so there's two components to Train's bid. One component is the controls, where, which is their labor and their, um, programming time, basically, to get the, the systems installed and communicating. So that contract is between CNTA and Train. So if the board approves tonight or today, if, if the board decides this is the path we're going to go, we can go ahead, CNTA, between CNTA and Train can initiate that purchase order and take that 10% off the table right away. Then beyond that, um, it's the equipment. And the equipment is really what Train has impending price increases coming in January. So that's why they want the PO to, because they know they're going to, with raw materials and things, copper's going up. They know they're going to have a price increase. So the, the, what, what really needs to happen to capture, but it's not 10% of the entire number anymore because we're able to eliminate the controls penalty, uh, between us and Train. It's just becomes a, a question of can the district get the PO to Train to save 6% sales tax? And then avoid the 10% price increase. Another possible solution could be, if that doesn't look like it's going to happen, again, CNTA can just issue the PO for the equipment and we have to pay 6%. So it becomes basically, instead of a 10% penalty, it could be a 6% penalty if we do the purchase order. Typically, that equipment is purchased by the school district to avoid that. But in this scenario, that is a potential solution to kind of, you know, for that penalty to not be so great.
As a district, we cannot issue a purchase order until KEE approves a contract, project is approved.
Okay. So if we were, if we were to kind of, uh, look at doing the West Marion base and the Glasscock base plus the gym and QC Spalding? And then basically round back to this conversation regarding adding geothermal at West Marion? Can someone identify documents, if there are, like 10 of them, um, that we would need to, or that I would need to select in order to make the motion? Because we do have to say which, which options we're selecting, which ones we're moving forward with. Or is that why we get big, big bucks just to figure that out ourselves? Right. But I'm talking about the language that's used in the, in the agenda item that would have to be selected.
That was actually five, five Shepherd document that we had to do.
We had hard copies of them, didn't we?
We, we, we print some stuff off, we print it off because on certain pages, the only thing that changes is the number, the pay off and all the rest is the same. So, um, we can, we'll get you all the, through all that ones we know.
So, but that sounds like, like which, which ones in this, in this list?
You would just pay the dollar amount, wouldn't close, start with alternates, the base and the alternates that you make the motion to approve? And then we have the paperwork, or, but I think you're.
So are we approving both BG2s regardless of what we select?
Yeah, correct. The BG2 is just a summary of energy savings with the.
And then we would be approving?
The draft contracts based off the contract price? And then also this fellow company looking at.
It's going to be that first draft BG1, base plus gym plus.
So, of course, we're still having a discussion about this.
Right.
However, I want to know what your recommendation is as well as the pollings.
You being.
I'd like to know what you guys would recommend to us. What, what is?
Well, we've had conversations, we went last week with Mr. Randolph and, uh, his potential for Bonn County, I stood to, I guess it was. We came across that we think we're comfortable with the base at H, the building gym. We've always talked about building gym, we never have been able to do it, just to get all elementary schools the same. And then the annex is always being utilized. We, uh, so we would say A plus H, is what our recommendation.
I just, I just wanted to.
And if we're energy managers anymore, I think it makes sense to, uh, to get the most, I think there, catch our savings there. Moving forward, long term.
I was just talking about kicking the, the cost, like the, the cost that we're kicking down the road. And so some of us could be in these seats 10 years from now when we have to address that 726.
And the other thing is, this is not hitting our bottom potential.
Right.
So we're able to just continue on our path that we talked about with the high school calendar, women manager. This is not going to impact that, that scope of order because it's coming from this federal ESRS funds. We've watched many, many, uh, podcasts and I promise you this leads a ball of passion from these farmers very far in the group, so.
Based on the 3.5 million dollar budget with a, a bit of, I'll call it half a billion dollar contingency to keep us up at that $4 million level. The 3.661K, uh, allows us to do that. And then if it is flared to the board to pursue after any savings can be realized in cash, to pursue a geothermal option, then we, we're going to have to have more time to do budget amendments anyway. So at that point, we can pursue that.
And, uh, and I'm too, I'm concerned with the 7, with the, I'm sure it's the outside air units that brings in fresh air, drift is what we're talking about. Scott, so what that is? That's, those are the air.
Those air handlers, yes. And we did a lot of work on those prior year before we returned, you know, with COVID and everything there. More so than ever before. So they are in working order right now.
Right.
I don't like that part.
I don't think, I don't think you're. It almost feels to me like we're, we're boxed into a specific decision. I don't, I don't like that feeling either.
Well, I think what it does too is allow us to make sure we maximize the power, like expenses of those units. If we utilize them 10 more years at that point. The other good thing is our utility rate for our general fund should be going down because it's more efficient equipment. So we should be able to draw our, draw our, and we have to, I mean, it's a show to KEE that 50% of this project is going to be saved by savings of energy consumption, operation length and stuff. So we can set some of that stuff aside. This indirect cost that we can be charged on the grant, the grant, we can, we can set this aside with your market to start putting towards this kind of work. So I do think it allows us most flexibility to guarantee we're getting, no one knows how long it will last. I mean, you're right. Uh, but I think this, this is an option to get, so we spent about $60,000 last year getting all those units up and running. Make sure that fresh air was coming in when it came out of COVID. So I think it gives us opportunity to realize that the life and safety of that equipment. Not only that, it's going to be something in the future we have to deal with, but I think if we know that, we can start planning accordingly from the energy savings as well as indirect costs, charges, charge the grants, we start remarking that now. Normally we don't have a big ticket out of number.
Just, uh, just because I don't know, how, how many units are we talking? Is it, how many separate units are there?
There's one part classroom and then your larger areas, maybe a center, cafeteria, sort of that.
So realistically, the odds of us having to do all of them at one time?
Oh, sorry, you want the air handlers?
The, the outside air units.
Oh, sorry, the outside classroom. No, there, um, I'm trying to think, there's two on the main, or main log, then there's, I think there's five total on classroom.
Still the, the chances of all them quitting on the same day?
Correct. It's not, correct.
Correct. So, so we could be looking, one could, one could last two years and the other one could last 10.
Correct. And that, now that, uh, replacement of the one at West Marion is included because that has issues. And we're going to make it more efficient, it's going to share it kind of like the high school project. So it is getting replaced. So it is getting replaced in.
In the base?
In the base.
Unless another one of those things where the base would come down?
Correct.
If we went geothermal, is that right?
No.
The air handle, okay, we're talking about the air handle, okay.
Gosh, Shelley, when is your grant supposed to be spent? The third one is 2024. The other one, 2023, 2024. That's why I'm saying is like if we're...
We have some time.
Yeah, we have some time, I just want to make sure that, because with budgets, if you don't use it, you lose it.
Correct. There's a lot of communication going on, whoever thinks, like two, just mention it, so.
Other questions or discussion?
I sense we're getting closer to, to a vote on something. Just want to be clear, with what we're talking about would add geothermal to West Marion, correct?
We're taking it out right now.
But looking toward the future.
I understand what they said and I, I think the recommendations are great and know more than I know about it. I'd like to accept recommendations. But I will say one other thing, Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
You said something that depressed me more than anything else this, this day. We need good surprises and not bad surprises. So with, with what we're doing, we have the potential for some good surprises down the road somewhere. I like that, I like the way you, I'm sure you planned it that way, so I just want to say I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think so, I think so, we'll see. Okay, any other questions or comments on? Okay, all right, I'm going to give it a go. And I'll just say this, I would like us to round back to the geothermal conversation at West Marion because, you know, I think we don't know what's going to happen with that building. I know that Glasscock, the original part of that was constructed in 1960 something, one-ish?
Ish.
Ish. And Calvary is still in use today, soon to be. So we just don't know how long we're going to need West Marion to be there and functioning and all of that stuff. So if there's an investment to be made to ensure that that can last longer, then, then, you know, that's why when you get to be a grown-up, you buy better furniture, it lasts longer.
Well, the good is we'll know sooner than later, if January 7th is not far off. We can come back to you all sooner than later with the equipment we're working on. So we'll know by January 4th.
Great.
What that was like.
Yeah, so I would just, let's, let's go ahead and plan to round back to this conversation and also go ahead and plan to start, if we can, earmarking or keeping that, that 726 at Glasscock in mind and knowing that that's...
I'm working on the direct budget for next year, right, as we speak, so.
Review, okay. So I'm going to make a motion on item three to consider approval of, yeah, we shifted everything down.
Do you have to, you have to...
We are, we...
Right there.
We are. Yeah, yes. So we are officially on, Kim, on that one, you're on item two. Remember we shifted because item two became amendment of agent. So I'm going to make a motion that we consider approval of the BG one for 3.661 million to include the base at West Marion, the gym and the Husey Spalding options, both BG twos. The option one, combined contract and project scope documents for the guaranteed energy savings project at Glasscock and West Marion. BG number 22-283. Good? Awesome.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. Any other question? Okay, all in favor? Okay, I need a motion on the current item three.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of waiver for equipment located in the classrooms at West Marion for the guaranteed energy savings project BG 22-283.
Say something there.
Um, let's talk about what, what this accomplished.
Yes, so the, when that building was built, it was designed such that the HVAC units are condo units which sit on the floor in the classroom under the windows. There's not enough room above the ceiling as there is in some other schools because of the way that that building was designed. So if HVAC equipment is located in the classroom, KEE's facility regulations for new construction and for renovation say, don't put HVAC equipment in the classroom. And the reason for that is often is, is because of the acoustics, the noise. But in a lot of these old schools, there's really no other option. So it's typical on these projects where that condition exists in an existing building where we really don't have any other option than to go back with a unit to replace what's there. KEE requires a waiver for that and they've never not accepted that as a direction now.
Other questions on this one? All in favor? Aye. I need a motion on item four.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of more municipal advisors to engagement contacts with Robert, Kaya, and Claire and company.
I'll second.
So Claire is just our, the bonding agent that would be...
So this is for the high school project, so now we have all this proof, PEE, we've moved forward and everything in contract and we're going to start showing the minds. So this is the first step, prove it contract, and then go to the market for us and get this ready for the final sale and we'll still be on high to capture the SSCC offer. So we're moving forward, this is the first step to tell them to start, start the process when we start playing with high school project.
Other question? All in favor? I need a motion on item six.
Make a motion about student learning and support consent item KEE and B.
I'll second. Thank you, Jett, I know you guys, you're great, we love you. And for the 21st century program, good luck. Any other questions or comments on this? All in favor? Aye. I need a motion on item six. All in favor? Yeah, for evermore, Karen, that's yours.